Meeting in order, it is 5:30. Uh, first, we have going into closed session. Do you want me to read this now, or when do we get in there?
Um, we can do the motion now, and then we can read the same motion or just summary.
Okay, so can I get a motion to go into closed session, please?
I'll make the motion. I'm gonna do it in closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D dot O five subdivision three C to develop and consider offers to purchase permanent and temporary easements for the Third Street Bridge Building over portions of Carver County, PIDs two zero zero five zero zero nine nine zero and two zero zero five zero zero four seven zero.
Well done. Get a motion by council member first one.
I'll say.
And a second by council member Welsh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's go.
She thought it was too sleepy for that, didn't she?
I was too sleepy. Well done. Brenda.
Bren.
Is that there?
Oh, sorry, that's the other.
Are you seen in the room?
I'm gonna be there.
I'm gonna go do a closing.
Good. I'm just gonna take this off the screen. Thank you, you're good, okay.
Ready.
All right, um, up next, we have a parks funding review.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. At our recent council meeting, we were discussing, uh, park project, oops, sorry. I didn't realize this was the touchscreen until this moment. I made a statement during the council meeting, Dave gave me kind of a funny look, and we had a conversation about it, so. Uh, at council's request, we're just gonna do a park funding overview tonight, so I know that a lot of this is information that you all know. I'm sorry.
I was turning it on.
So I'm gonna give a quick overview of the Parks Master Plan, the Comp Plan, how those things work together to figure out our park dedication fee, and just how we've been operating with that fund for the past several years. So we'll do park dedication one-on-one, an overview of the master plan, park dead fees, and then we'll have a discussion.
Uh, your one.
Thank you. So park dedication is required in Minnesota State statute, and I stress this with the planning commission really heavily, that anytime any project comes into the city, park dedication is required. So it can come in in cash or land, depending on the parks plan, if we have a park that is proposed in the area, or we can say to a developer, we don't have a park in that area, we'll take cash from you to start building our park dedication fund for future projects that we have planned. So that's the city's prerogative, we have that option. It's a discussion that usually happens pretty early in the phases of a development, usually at concept plan. I can give the developer a rough idea of what we're thinking for park dedication, whether it be land or cash. And then the cash payments received must be used for the acquisition and development, or improvement of park recreational facilities, playgrounds, trails, welllands, open space. So this fund, uh, is unique, that there are really specific things we can use it for. So the fund, I think, can seem big and exciting, but then if you think about the limited number of things that we can use it for, it starts to get a little bit more real. I would say this is also one of the pieces that I wish more people knew about, is the park dedication fund, that residents that are living in the city of Carver are paying just a small percentage of new parks that we're typically working on, that new development is really our biggest funding source for new parks and trails through this Minnesota State statute. So, again, something that you've seen a lot, something we talk about quite a bit, but just wanting anyone who's watching or watching this later to know that there are requirements for the dollars. Typically, new parks are paid for by new development, the city contributes about seventeen thousand dollars annually, but typically, we're pulling in quite a bit more than that through park dedication on our new projects.
Did, did we, I think we had a question a couple of minutes ago, on whether that is purely brand-new development, or would that be like replacement of existing structures?
That's kind of the crux of the whole.
Okay.
That's the whole discussion.
Yeah, well, I don't know if this gets to your question, but the only way we can require park dedication is if they subdivide property. So if somebody tears a building down and puts up a new thirty-unit apartment building that didn't even exist before, we can't require park dedication in that case because they're not subdividing. Um, so the trigger is the subdivision. If that makes sense.
So park dedication lives in chapter forty-two of our city code subdivision, so as you start moving through the planning process, you'll see this is where it lays out our sketch plan, or what we call concept plan, preliminary plan, final plan. So showing it's a requirement in our city code. Different cities have different ways to collect park dedication. I'd say there are two ways that are pretty typical in our area. The first is that some cities say that there's a percentage of land required, so they say of the ten acres required, one acre must be preserved for park and open space. At that point, that one acre could be used for a park, or annually, they set the amount, the value per acre in the city fee schedule. So Victoria, for example, uses this in their fee schedule right now, they, uh, believes one acre of parkland is about a hundred thousand dollars. So depends city to city, how it works, different methodology. I would say ours is a little bit more solid than that, and it's a per-unit basis, so a developer could figure out what our park dedication fee number is, figure out how many units are proposing, and start to get an idea of what that number is. We're setting it each year in the fee schedule is a little bit more volatile. So how we came to that is we created an estimate of funding requirements for future park improvements, and then divided that number by the units, or the equivalent residential unit considered in the comprehensive plan. So as part of the comprehensive planning process, as required by the Met Council, we have to have a section of parks and trails in our Comp Plan. You also have the ability to adopt a pretty standard short version of parks and trails, which we did, we did eight pages, knowing that we were going to start work on the Parks Master Plan, which is a much more robust project, it was sixty-four pages. We did it this way, just in case we wanted to change the Parks Plan at all, we wouldn't have to do a Comp Plan amendment, we could just amend the Parks Master Plan as a group here without my council, so we met the requirements of the Comp Plan with those eight pages, but then we have that supplemental sixty-four that we have a little bit more control over. So that work was completed in twenty nineteen with the Parks Commission, City Council adopted it in twenty nineteen. At that point, we did a revision to that subdivision section of the city code, or section forty-two, laying out our new requirements. So we did the Parks Master Plan, also updated that ordinance, so they were working together. If you were around during the comprehensive plan, you'll remember how excited I was about this survey that we did, because I got so many answers. But some of them were related to recreation, so if you haven't looked at the Parks Master Plan recently, just a reminder of some of the things that community members were looking for, and that started to form the work that we put into the Parks Master Plan, so people looking for, um, community gathering spaces, so if you start thinking about some of the parks we're working on, you'll start to see these threads coming through, so community gathering spaces, I would say the downtown park needs that, Dog Park, obviously Creekside, Fitness Center, I think is a great goal, but probably not something that the community can, uh, fund and continue to maintain. Splash Pad Downtown, uh, I'd say bike trails are something we think about quite often in the development process, so trying to be really cognizant of the feedback we received from the survey and with the Parks Master Plan, you'll start to see how they are woven together.
Erin, did we have a question for other on there? Did we get?
We did, but.
Opened and responded.
Yeah, we didn't get very many, though.
Nothing that stood out?
No.
So Larry Harris somewhere is scratching his head like.
Who is talking about me? The nexus.
Yes. Quote-unquote, I'm sure Dave was just like, man, what's gonna be your buzzword?
You're like, nexus.
Rough proportionality and nexus.
Sounds tough. So in our Parks Master Plan, we were tasked with determining the nexus or link to land fee collected for amenities, so we couldn't give just an arbitrary number to developers to say we need ten thousand dollars per unit without backing that up. And then I was looking through the Parks Master Plan for the first time in a while, and found a couple fun nuggets of information, so, um, in our eventual full build-out and design in Carver, the Parks Master Plan, the city will own and maintain a hundred and seventy-seven acres of parkland. Uh, the standard is one acre per one hundred residents, so that would put Carver at one acre per eighty-seven, so not super important in this discussion, but I thought just a fun fact in showing our commitment to parks, open spaces.
Erin, I have a question. What does that standard come from? Is that to come back council, or just?
No.
Kind of what we're finding in our communities?
It's a national outdoor recreation group. And then the Parks Master Plan determined four parks, third areas, so determining four areas that we didn't have a park that we thought would be an interesting piece of the community, so Gaystock Lake will eventually be annexed into the city of Carver. We obviously don't have a lake in Carver, so that might be the first, or Mueller's, whichever one comes first. The downtown park, uh, the end of Broadway, Mueller's redevelopment, and then Summerfield, which is that area south of Carrver City limits.
Can I put it in this for maybe a discussion later time tonight? But Mueller's, okay, so we've been kind of sitting on this Mueller's redevelopment forever, and, you know, they've said, oh, we're gonna close it down, we're gonna close it, but, I mean, they could truly be here for forty, fifty, sixty years.
Yep.
Do we want to maybe look that there's something else that we wanna plan in here, rather than sitting on something that we may never get, and certainly not like in our lifetimes?
Yep, we could. We have to plan for it in the Comp Plan anyways, so we will have to keep thinking about them as when their use changes, but yeah, we can definitely think about it.
Okay.
So how we got to that nexus is we thought about all of the parks that we thought would be upcoming by twenty forty, should everything go miraculously, we annex all the property we think we could. So these are twenty nineteen dollars, I put these together with Jonathan Nelson and Brian Skoku, who was the Public Services Director at the time. So we added up all things that we thought would be needed to go into a park, so it ranged from things like land acquisition to landscaping, earthwork, lighting, parking, et cetera, and we came to our grand total of just nearly nineteen million dollars for our future park system. So the existing system is not included in that equation, so things like replacement playgrounds, work on shelters that we have is not included in that, it's just future park development right now. So Design Carver, the Comp Plan, calls for eighty-eight percent of our development in our full build-out area to be residential, roughly six thousand acres, eleven percent of that to be commercial. There are some mixed-use areas that change that number a little bit, so including the mixed-use areas, we broke that into eighty percent residential, twenty percent commercial, so if you think about mixed-use would be an apartment that has retail on the bottom, so it'd be eighty percent residential, twenty percent commercial. So including the mixed-use areas, we anticipate eighty-five percent of Carver will be residential, fifteen commercial or industrial. So you can see on the map here, thinking commercial, industrial, red, purple, mixed-use is that orange, so if you see Mueller's, that's that orange color, and then everything in the yellowish shade is residential, so again, eighty-five percent residential, fifteen percent commercial, industrial. So we took that almost nineteen million dollars, the total amount of future park projects, times that eighty-five percent, or the amount of residential that we thought we would see, and then divided it by the future housing units, so the total number of housing units that will fill that eighty-five percent of the remaining area of Carver, and we got to four thousand seventy dollars per unit. Commercial is similar, it's not based on a per-unit basis, it's on an acreage basis, so again, we took that nineteen million, times it by that fifteen percent being commercial, industrial, divided by acres of land, to get to three thousand thirty dollars per acre of land for each development. When we were working on this project, we saw a lot of developers in Carver, so we ran these numbers past them to say, just gut check, how are you feeling, where are we falling? And we got some feedback that, uh, it wasn't like, oh yeah, that's great, but it was just like, yep, that's about where we think that you should be, and that's not atypical of where other communities around us that are developing fell, so none of them had heartburn, no one obviously wants to pay four thousand dollars per unit, and greater, that's typically passed on to the homeowner anyways, and the cost of their new home. And I'll just add again that the city contributes roughly seventeen thousand dollars annually into the park dedication fund, so current residents continue to pay into our new parks, it's not completely new residents, everyone in Carver has a stake in our new parks, so whether that be from new development, the planning process, or dollars that come into the park dedication fund.
So the fourth on that's our current, right?
Correct. Yep. So thinking through permits, we take part in park dedication at the time of recording, so these are, we don't take in X number of dollars per year, but I broke it down by each permit, so if we put, took park dedication for each permit, these are the breakdown that we would see for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, so you can see twenty twenty-one was a really big year for us, at seven hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Uh, twenty twenty-four will also look pretty good, with the CDA project coming in with at least sixty units, that puts us at like four twenty-ish, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But thinking about these projects, if you add up those four years, which were really big permit years for the city of Carver, it puts us at about two point three million dollars. Downtown Park is estimated in twenty nineteen dollars at two point seven, so a lot of the work in the Parks Master Plan and park dedication is prioritizing, what do we see as the top priorities for us, what are we focusing on, and that's part of the discussion tonight, is that we have some of these parks that we're working on, um, changing how we spend park dedication is possible legally, Dave can support me a little bit in that in a minute, but it would need to change the Parks Master Plan drastically, um, change that number that we use, that nineteen million dollars would go up if we started including everything in our existing system, and that could push our dedication amount significantly higher from that four thousand seventy dollars per unit. So just to note, to date, the city has not used park dedication funds for replacement of existing equipment. Recent park dedication projects that we have funded through park dedication is the Ironwood Park Expansion, we paid for half of the JCP underpass out of park dedication, lighting at Ironwood Park was a big one, and then the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar match for Creekside is another park dedication expense. So at the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three city council mem, city council meeting, the council, uh, reviewed the ten-year Parks Master Plan, or ten-year Park Plan, so we, uh, Eric Madigan, Paul Schultz, and I went out, and we did a bit of an inventory of our existing system, and started to put numbers to the projects that we saw that were necessary, so twenty twenty-four, we talked about the court resurfacing, which we're moving forward with, and then we started talking about community park, whether we wanted to do a playground replacement or shelter replacement. We also included, uh, some projects that we were looking for some feedback on from the city council, so, again, this was reviewed in September, but some large ticket items that we started to identify that either needed some planning, or needed to start being on the radar of the city council, so at that point, the projects have just been identified, uh, we got some direction from the city council for, uh, starting to save more aggressively for our existing system in Carver to start doing some more replacements.
Erin, how old is the Community Park Shelter? Do you know where that was built?
Um, twenty-eleven, I think the pictures are from.
That's what it was built, the Community Park?
The Community Park.
Shelter.
Shelter, I don't know, the, like, the, the original.
Oh, yeah.
Space was from Riverside Park, and was moved to Community Park.
Oh, really? Yeah.
And then the, like, the.
And maybe the playground is there.
I think the block portion then was constructed at, I don't know, at what date, but at a later time, but the original shelter was on that concrete pad at Riverside.
Isn't that such a weird fact?
Yeah. And could we, and it's not on the historic registry, right? Please make sure it's.
Yeah. I thought you were gonna go the other direction.
No, no.
Okay, so, uh, the council, uh, gave us some direction to move forward with Lions Park resurfacing, and then the Community Park Shelter, so some other projects that are not included in the ten-year plan that the city council reviewed, but things that we should be thinking about in the future is Community Park Playground, the skate park at Community Park, which is something we're chatting about a lot, uh, and then just some replacements, so Olson Park Playground.
Hi, Jim.
Devo Park Playground, et cetera, et cetera. So, again, as we have operated previously, we have not used park dedication funds for these types of projects. If we did, we would need to undo some work in the Parks Master Plan, reconfigure that equation to include these projects, which would inflate the amount per unit, obviously, I'm not sure what the development community action would be, and then, of course, the future home cost increases, because that cost is not paid for by Lennar, D.R. Gordon, M.I., it's paid for by the person moving into that house. So, all of this is about prioritization. What does the city council want to hold true for the park dedication funding? So, uh, we're pretty locked in with Creekside with the DNR grant, that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then the downtown park has been what we've been working towards as a priority, so our park dedication fund is currently very low post-Ironwood Park, but we're seeing some projects come in again, like the CDA will give us a nice chunk of money. Uh, adding replacement of existing equipment could be considered legally, but in practice, it has not, and priority projects can pretty quickly slip away if we start using park dedication dollars for replacement projects, so it can feel a little bit like, oh, we'll just do it once, and we'll spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars here and there, but that starts to add up really quickly with how park dedication can sometimes just be trickling in.
The four thousand dollars, that was, uh, twenty nineteen.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying.
Yep.
So that hasn't really adjusted for the cost of housing going up.
No, and I think that, uh, as we start getting closer to some of these projects, like the downtown park, I think getting a more realistic estimate of that project is a good idea, just so we can start wrapping our heads around it a little more, a little bit more, which might increase that amount. We would just need to revise the fee schedule as well, since the fee schedule is where our park dedication number is set annually.
Good.
Erin, is there a rotation in which you review the park dedication fees? Is it, I mean, it's been five years, so.
Yeah, I'd say about do.
Okay, and especially, like, makes me a little bit nervous, because in twenty nineteen, that was pre-COVID, pre-inflation, so.
Yep.
Um, I just, I've always been worried we're not taking, not taking, but getting enough for park dead, um, and here we are. I think, for me, I kinda wanna continue the way we're going, I really don't like the idea of seeing this, you know, funding kind of special projects through the park dedication fund. I think, um, we have a long-term plan, and Erin did a really good job of demonstrating what's coming up and what's coming around the bend, um, and if we start spending, kind of like you said in your presentation, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars here, three hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollars there, from park dead, I think it's a slippery slope, and then what could have been a downtown park in twenty twenty-six becomes a, remember when we said downtown park in twenty twenty-six? That's never gonna happen. So I'm not against funding these projects, but I would rather do them through general fund, um, or through another park fund, uh, but I like kind of how we are funding Lions Park through our budget for twenty twenty-four.
Is there a percentage of that park dedication that could be dedicated towards, you know, those, those other projects that we have to fund? So, so we put a cap on it, so it doesn't impact a future project? If we, I don't know what that percentage would be, does it make sense to look at it from that?
I think we can make that decision, but it makes me nervous in that what we're collecting now is enough to collect what's in the Parks Master Plan, not a replacement skateboard, not a replacement, um, shelter or a community.
No, and I understand the logic, and I understand wanting to preserve those upcoming projects, and that's why I'm asking about a percentage, so.
Yeah.
You wouldn't risk derailing something.
Yeah, well, or if going forward, would we recalculate for Community Park? Kind of to what you said, do we figure in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of something every year? Although I think a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the option you showed us is very, very, very low end, so.
And we've started to, the ten-year, uh, Parks Plan showed us starting to collect money for replacement of projects, so we're starting.
As a part of the park dedication fee, or just as budgeting, like, like the road thing, right?
Correct, yes, very similar.
And your capital?
Capital.
Yep, sorry, what year did you say it was?
It was in last year.
We reviewed it in September.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think we should definitely increase the current park dedication fund to at least catch up with inflation and expected costs. How? Right, if the housing prices are going up, and that's, I mean, do you think that developers would be amicable for, uh, like, I don't know, thousand, two thousand dollars, or is it, I think they're more concerned about the percentage of the house cost, or just like the fixed number, right? Because the housing.
Yeah, so it comes down for them, they generally wrap that into the sale price of a house, so I would say in general, metro cities probably fall between three thousand and seven thousand dollars for total park dedication dollars. I would feel uncomfortable jumping to seven.
Okay.
I think that much of an increase would be hard, especially for developers that are already here, to go one year, you owe us four thousand, to the next year, it's seven thousand, so we can definitely start looking at those numbers, reworking them. Inflation is probably gonna tell a better story for us than just saying, I want it to be six thousand dollars, but that much of a jump would be a hard.
I think we should do a calculation of.
Yeah.
Because I know that one has turned back, and it's just passed on to the home buyer.
Yeah.
So we talk about housing prices, and then we have to be cognizant of, like, I think really following the calculations, and with inflation is really important, and I'm not saying that you're just arbitrarily gonna throw a dart and say we want seven grand, but it always does get turned back, right?
Yeah, well, I, I just think that's going into, it doesn't seem like there's that much excess to support extra projects, right, based on our current budget for the new park build-out, increasing it to take ten or fifty percent, well, that's one point eight, almost two million dollars, right, and then back, I mean, that seems like that would put us higher than we want for, for the park dedication fees going forward, so I, I think we definitely wanna track inflation, but I don't, I guess I don't feel comfortable trying to use that to retrofit existing playgrounds and whatnot.
It would be the same method.
Yeah.
We'd probably start by looking at the Parks Master Plan, updating all the numbers, those numbers are gonna change, because I don't think anybody in twenty nineteen envisioned a couple of years of ten percent inflation and things like that, and, you know, maybe it's a matter of sprinkling in some percentage for replacement of large infrastructure, I mean, you also have to be mindful that when we say replacement, and, you know, this is where the legal issue kind of comes into play, but it's not like you can replace a broken slide on a large piece of playground equipment, that to me is maintenance, but when we're talking about something like a skate park that has been totally decommissioned and taken out.
Brand-new one.
Its useful life is over with, and so you can improve the park by putting a new one in, that's the example that kind of led us to this conversation.
Right, okay.
There's a lot of, of different examples, I wouldn't feel comfortable, for example, resurfacing a tennis court with park dedication, to me, resurfacing a tennis court is almost like maintaining a street. The court exists, you're just replacing the surface of it. But, you know, if a, there's a really old piece of playground equipment, or a really old shelter that has to go, I think there's a very good argument, and I'd feel perfectly comfortable advising the city that you can use park dedication money on a replacement piece of that large, um, park amenity. But to Erin's point and the whole discussion, it's all about prioritizing, and I think trying to get, um, get you to a place where you're comfortable as a council in terms of what's next, what do we wanna program in terms of park improvements, what's important to you, and then, you know, giving the staff direction on how to update the Parks Master Plan, and working backwards to get to that number. My advice on fees is always to not have a target on your back, I mean, maybe there are cities out there that go six or seven thousand, but I don't like, I don't like being on the high end, because you're gonna be more susceptible to challenge, and I like trying to fall in line, or, you know, around the average, or a little above maybe what other cities in your, your nearby developing communities are doing.
Don't be the outlier.
That said, I mean, it doesn't mean we couldn't plug numbers in and justify it, but at some point, those numbers are gonna be unreasonable, and it's actually a hamper development, too, so you, you kind of have to walk the tightrope a little bit with that for a number of reasons, but.
And so according, I, I mostly agree with the fact that we don't want to whittle away a park debt with these little tiny projects, but I don't think that we should have, that be the hard and fast rule, that nothing ever comes out for some of these smaller ones. I think as a general rule, that we should have most of the things coming in, I mean, those big, big projects that we're planning for, but I don't, if it fits and it works, I'm not, I'm not opposed to using some of it for a few smaller things here and there.
I would like to be able to use the park dedication for some of the other things, like the improvements or replacing something, so I kind of look at it as like three different things, so we've talked about the prioritization of the parks. I, for like this discussion, I see no need in changing that, I mean, I think we're, that's a separate, like, I would, I would support what we have right now. I would, um, like to see how we collect the money, and then, like, it's not so, you know, what is it, um, how are we gonna spend it? You know, are we collecting it because we're only just spending it this way, or is there something we can do to like broaden how we can spend it? So in the stack, you had one of the first, was that Minnesota statute?
Mm-hmm.
So I wanna look at, if you can pull that up, I think it's the third slide, the second from the bottom, and it's, it's be, so interesting if they would have worded it like an and/or, but, um, I mean, I see it's cash payments, second from the bottom, cash payments received must be used for acquisition and development, or improvements of parks, it's really, Juvena doesn't say improvements of existing. It's really, Juvena doesn't say improvements of existing parks or improvements of 20-year-old parks or new parks. So I would like to see us use some park dedication for improvements of parks. And then on the next slide, it talks about more like in our methodology, the second from the bottom again, is that estimate of funding required for future park improvements, that maybe we expand that. Or, yeah, if, I mean, I also, I like the idea of how the new development, it's not just them, but every, you said, everyone has a stake in the new parks. But I really also feel like the developers that come in, we need their help to give stake in the old parks, because we're not really gonna be building a whole lot more new ones, or it's just like, let's take care of what we have.
But people are coming, people are coming here for what we have also. They're moving in, they have something that they can't even have. So I don't agree that there's some stake in that.
And I hope there's something with this park dedication that this estimate of funding required would be for, instead of just future park improvements, maybe it's for future park improvements and existing parks within X number of, you know, or, you know, connected by a trail, or, you know, we're not gonna ask a new developer to, you know, help redo a park that's six miles away. You know, what if that's actually an amenity that they, they would use? So, yeah, so kind of those things. I don't, I think we're doing great on the priority. I don't see a change in that. I would like to have, I don't think flexibility is the word, but like kind of that, or just, yeah, I guess flexibility to be able like, oh, this is our park dedication, and we can use it for, you know, and then fill in the blank, you know, maybe, to upgrade an existing amenity within a mile from the new development. So there's that. And now as far as the funding, I think we, I'm not, to, well, the reason I'm not concerned that we would like, you know, all of a sudden be like, oh, wait, we don't now have the money to do what we planned to do in, you know, 2020, whatever, for, you know, such a future park. I feel like we're doing a good job of like keeping on top of things and like you're watching numbers, like we, we haven't been shocked by something. Like we're keeping up, you know, we wouldn't put ourselves in that situation. We'd really evaluate. I don't think we were at risk of like draining, you know, a certain fund and not being able to accomplish what was planned. But to balance that, I would be comfortable with kind of what Reed was talking about with, just knowing that there's inflation, with the next time we review scheduling for a year, if that's then like next December, but asking the builders to contribute more, so that then we could do both things with the dedication fund. Lori, I'm worried that you don't, don't...
Go ahead.
Okay.
That is, when you're done.
Okay, I'm worried that you don't, so what we are, can you go to Parks Master Plan or the... I'm thinking like slide seven, maybe? So what we're, oh, you know what, that's, where you talked about where you sat down with Brian and everybody.
Oh, the totals.
Yeah. So what we're collecting for the Park Dad right now is to fund that, that list right there. We don't have money in there for a skate park. We don't have money for anything else. And I'm really concerned that that 18.7 is a low number, because that's 2019 numbers, where everything is probably now 10% more or better, or worse, depending on how you look at things, right? So I think we're saying the same thing, and that we need to see, we at least need to see any, a new recalculation of the Park Dad, but we don't have extra money to spend on redoing parks and putting in a skate park. I think that that is a decision, and that means that I think we have to come up with a list, we need to add that to our plan, and we need to be really thoughtful of this and include it in the money that we're collecting, so that we know new skate park here, new park shelter there. I think it's better if we continue to kind of set aside a fund and kind of proceed how we're doing. New parks is Park Dad, it's that stuff. Stuff like existing parks, guys, are still talking, if you don't mind. New parks is stuff that comes out of budget money. Did you have something?
Again, I'm gonna go back to Mueller's. We've got Mueller's in here, that could be 50 years out. That's far outside of this right now. So maybe we, when we take a look at this, we can talk a little more about Mueller's and what, because that could free up some money for now as we look to later, because it could be 50 years. And so when we're sitting on two, you know, on an expectation of this $2 million, when in 50 years, the city's gonna look entirely different, and if that ever decides to go, it could funding, there's gonna be more people here, more money.
Yeah, I get where you're going with Mueller's, because we're certainly not gonna be in these seats when Mueller's redevelops. And who knows what it'll look like. We might not even be above the sod when Mueller's redevelops. But there are communities that are not far from us that have completely developed and still are looking to do park improvements and to have new parks, and they don't have any money. So they're in a world apart from a financial perspective, where they're trying to do a, a sales tax and all kinds of funding options to try to get new park amenities. So I just don't want to be in that position. I want to make sure that we have the plan and that we're collecting an appropriate amount of money for Mueller's, be it whenever it redevelops, in five years or 55 years.
The part that I'd be interested in hearing from the council is what do you think you might gain by switching funding sources? Because park dedication, as you can see from one of those earlier slides, is riddled with statutes. And so like, you have the most flexibility collecting money and placing it in park capital. Because you could certainly add funding for replacement of existing facilities. But when you go through the analysis, you're gonna likely be changing the city's existing population contribution, because you couldn't say that new residents are using, Larry Harris has scratched this setting again. It would be disproportionate to have new residents pay that much for to replace an existing structure compared to the whole.
I wouldn't actually challenge that. Like, if they're gonna use it, though, or...
But then they should pay the same amount, shouldn't they? And so like, here's like the rest of like the thought related to this is, there are cities that, we don't know the future, but there's like, the city of St. Paul was assessing for street maintenance projects, the very same street maintenance project that they're approving tonight. And they got challenged on that and lost. And so the councils had a history, at least recent history, of saying, you're going to budget in the general fund for, you know, maintenance, whatever degree of that, so you're not doing franchise fees, you're gonna do a payment management plan. In this case, for, you're maybe advocating for a Parks Maintenance Plan. And so I, you know, I think there's obviously very different opinions where you could go with this. But I would say investing in park capital to whatever degree you feel confident is abundantly more safe than trying to constitute a replacement plan in park dedication that we've seen just in this year, how legislators in St. Paul want to mess with housing. So I think you're putting yourself in a position where that could be challenged, not only by folks in St. Paul, but developers. And so it just becomes murky. And so if you said, it would help me, and I think the team understand that, what you thought you would be gaining by transitioning from park capital to park dedication, because they kind of face it, this seems like, well, there's money there. But this money is dedicated, and so what you need to do is change the plan and add some pieces. But then the funding formula changes, so instead of doing $17,000, and again, Lori, you might be right, like, it might stay the same, but it could double, so instead of doing $17,000 a year, based on the math and based on Dave's analysis, it could be $45,000 a year. And then if it's at $45,000, are you better off to say, well, why don't we just put it in the park capital? That way, we don't have to worry about all this methodology, justification, and maybe a future lawsuit of some developer just gets aggrieved. It's our money, it's in there, you decide when and how to use it. I just think it's unencumbered in that way, where this, you could very well use it in the way that some of you are describing, but there are risks that you don't have with park capital.
Yeah, and one thing I'd add to that, too, in the park capital fund, I mean, you can borrow, if there's an emergency, you need to spend money, you don't have cash. You can borrow from your park capital fund to do things and/or use money or shift money. But if it's a park dedication, can't do that. You can only spend it on certain things. And so, yeah, you have a lot less legal flexibility to do much with that park dedication fund. I think Bren's point is, this is just one tool and one pool of money, but keep in mind, once you put money into it, it is exactly used for the things that the statute requires, with really nothing else, so.
Well, I guess my other hesitation of relying on the park dedication fund is it's still variable, too, right, from year to year. If, you know, the community park playground deteriorates quickly and we had, that was how we were gonna replace it, but we didn't have enough development, the next year, then we have to take the playground down, there's no playground for a year, we'll wait for more development, right? Where if we have it set in the general budget as a planned, you know, like the maintenance, right? We have $100,000 every year, and then we planned out that, yep, if, you know, need replacement, we've already got the money, we can spend it, we don't have to worry about how well the development climate was the previous year or two years, so.
And this is for some policy context to add. There are some communities locally that are within the context of the developers agreement. In addition to park dedication, they're asking developers or the new residents to put a down payment on the first seal coating for that project. And there's been a pretty robust back and forth related to that, because at some point, there's a handoff between new development fees and what do my general property tax dollars go for? And so I don't, there's not a right or wrong answer. I'm just saying that it's complicated. And maybe not for some of you, I'm just saying, like, that's an example of like, some of the conversations you might want to have. You don't need to make decisions tonight. The goal was just to provide you with an education on like, where it's at. And so, or if you do have a consensus tonight, we can run with that, or if you say, can you put this on a future agenda? I need some time to think about it. We just need some guidance, but I just wanted to share that, because, you know, we've talked about that, should we be doing that? And just based on past decisions the council's made, we've chosen not to put that in the purview of like a development agreement of doing the first seal coat, because we think there'd be pushback, but there's a, there's kind of a bucket full of different things that you could end up charging if you wanted to. It's just, again, that's where that tolerance and feed, kind of tolerance that people are talking about in St. Paul come up, so.
I think when it comes down to it, there isn't a single one of us sitting in this room saying, nope, I don't want to invest in our parks, right? So I think we're on the same page there. I think we all want to invest, and we recognize the need to invest in our existing parks. It's just where that money comes from. Brent really hit the nail on the head. I know that I have talked in at least our last three meetings about what's going on in St. Paul in terms of housing and how much it scares the living daylights out of me, because they are looking to preempt our local authority, because they think that decisions like this, cities are making the wrong decision here. So I don't want to give them any ammunition as far as maybe making not traditional decisions, I guess, is what I would call the park dedication money. I like the idea of doing, having that park capital fund for park maintenance or renewing the stuff that, it's the water heater fund, right, for our parks. We know that a playground won't last for 70 years. We know that a trail is gonna need extension. That's probably a bad example, because that's part of our payment management plan, but we know that, you know, we're gonna need different things updated, and I would, I prefer to keep new and existing separate.
Can we start that for this next year's budget, right? Just go on our 10-year plan, figure out if we did it purely from the general fund, what we need to contribute each year to hit all those projects. Did we already do that?
We did that in the last.
So I think these are all, this is a good discussion, and I think it's a good argument on everybody's, you know, point of view here. And I appreciate some of the final comments here from, from you guys, too, about it. It does make it less messy if it stays the way it is, where you have these larger projects. I'm happy to move forward with that, but I do want, in the way that we have it presented, except I do want to just talk about Mueller's. And if we can do that, and what that looks like, because it's such a pie in the sky kind of deal.
And we could call it a regional park in the West Grove area, so.
I think that would make me feel better about this, because I just don't have the faith that that's gonna come around before, I'm not around, before I'm not around.
The county is planning a regional trail corridor that connects to Oconia through that area. So like, maybe in the update, taking up Mueller, then just putting like a search area, makes that feel more real.
Yeah, something along that line, yeah.
I'll also just note that there are projects we're working on right now where the developer knows these numbers, and they're using that for the projects they're working on right now. So I'd say if we go through and redo all the numbers, it would be a challenging conversation to change that number on some people on projects they're working on right now.
That's what I was gonna ask, do we have to do it at year end, or can we technically do it?
We can do it at any time. It would be a fee schedule amendment, but I would say that would be a bit controversial. So I'm happy to do this, but I, in my gut, I think it's easier to do it at the fee schedule in December.
Okay, the rate of there's a 2025.
Correct.
And are you gonna use the same formulation?
Yes, and then we can start having these conversations with developers, like whenever we see a large increase coming, we start to tell them pretty early, like, if you're gonna do a project in Carbonex, your fees will increase.
It won't necessarily be a large increase, but it will be reflected.
We could start, Aaron and Lynn could start working on the inflationary increases and start having conversations with developers, because, I mean, the world has changed from 2019 to now.
Yeah, but just thinking, like, the project we're thinking about is the CDA, or a lot of the funding is tied to state approvals, and I wouldn't want to rock that boat for them right now.
And I think the best way to do it would be to pair that with the Parks Master Plan update, but it would be not really a substantive update, it would be sort of a inflation or a cost of.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, as much as I'm in favor of updating this, I agree. I don't think that's fair to say, hey, you're approved, but guess what?
No, I agree.
Yeah, but let's.
What I'm hearing is update the Parks Master Plan for inflation and some language pieces.
Yep.
But conceptually, the funding mechanisms, the council's okay with funding the status quo, or is that?
That's my.
Yeah.
Not my first choice, a minority.
The genesis of this.
Actually, I'm looking up, too, like, I definitely need to know more about Park Capital. But, so I pulled up the, sorry, is it Northland? But anyways, the park improvements, like our project spending that we reviewed in November, so for this year, the .88 million for Creekside. And then year 2028 for downtown, and the year 2031 for Creekside Phase Two.
Yeah, and that's been revised since we applied for that grant, but Lynn is, we're gonna be doing a kickoff to the next year's revision of it, so we can, if you have.
But it helps me to see that and then try to match it with that.
Two different documents, because something like, that's a 10-year plan, and this goes well beyond 10 years.
I know that, but just.
What do you need for that? Do you need to connect you with Aaron and Lynn, or do you want to wait to the 10-year plan?
I'm gonna look at it some more, and then I'll probably maybe have some questions, and if there's a difference, why?
Okay.
Or which one is like the source of truth. And Reid, you're good?
I'm good.
Do you have which I have from us?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That was helpful, thank you.
City manager's report?
I just have one thing, the Legal Minnesota Cities Conference, so they have early bird pricing, so I just wanted to check with the council. Christine, you wanted to attend?
What were the dates again? It was June 26th.
Yeah.
26th to the 28th in Rochester. Reid, for you, planning on?
Yeah, I'm free, so.
So you're. Nope, Reid, why don't you plan on going?
As a council, and we talked about this with Dave briefly, but, you know, it'd be, have to be probably a council choice. We could accommodate more, this, as a council, you have to kind of decide if you want to, if that's a decision you want to make. I don't want to make that call for you.
Because Courtney, you're going. You're like, yeah, yeah, no, that's fine.
Yeah, no, that's fine. The days aren't, aren't the best for me, so go ahead.
I hope for Lori or Eric, are you...
Not this year, but...
So I would choose to go, but I understand the conflict and I don't want to, I don't need to make any special arrangements for that.
And I look to like, I mean, there's some things you can, topics that you can, you know, see from a webinar or someone has been done, Reed can report back to us. Courtney always gives us updates.
Yeah, if we're doing this right, we would be like, here's where you can find the PowerPoint. This one was really good.
Yeah, because you always come back and share.
That's all I have.
Okay, council requests? I'll make a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we get a second, second, everybody. Motion by Mock, second by Welch, any further discussion?
All those who've ever said aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same time? Passes.